Good afternoon. I would like to call this meeting to order. It's August 27th, and this is a special meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, could you do a roll call, see who's on the telephone?
Supervisor Johnson? Well, oddly, it would appear that nobody is on the phone, but...
Okay, well, we do have a quorum regardless.
Yes, you can continue, and hopefully they will get connected.
Okay, the first item would be a discussion on possible action, an upgrade -- update from the County Public Health Director to the Board of Supervisors regarding recent issues, actions, events, and county responses regarding COVID-19, and taking any necessary actions based upon these updates. So I'll turn the floor over to Denise Burley, our Public Health Director.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, thank you very much, and good afternoon. So I'll start off, as I always do, with the numbers. We've had 3,512 cases in the county to date. We have 2,437 recovered and 192 deaths. The average age of our cases is 48.1 years of age. Average age of deaths is 76.2. Any questions about the numbers?
Any questions for Denise?
Okay.
Nope.
All right. I wanted to make you aware that I had a member of the Board express interest in observing some of our public health COVID activities, and I wanted to offer that same opportunity to all Board members. Some of those might extend to complaint investigations, investigations themselves, and some of the EPI work that's done sort of behind the scenes to get a more of a feel for what work is done in that area. So if that's of interest to any of you, please reach out to me, and I'll make sure that I get that time scheduled, and we can either have you meet with staff, or we'll try to run through -- we're working up even a mock investigation that we can show you kind of the process of that.
Has joined the conference.
So, are we okay to keep going?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, all right, just want to be sure. So, as I mentioned, one of those items is the complaint inspections, so I wanted to run through that. And on August 11th, the Board supported the EO Executive Order Complaint Inspection Process that our Environmental Health Crew would follow to follow up with businesses on executive order complaints that we receive either via the email, or through other phone calls, or there's a variety of different sources that we'll get those kind of complaints from. And our first visit, as you remember, is education and technical assistance, and trying to answer questions, any questions. Second visit is continued, if they continue to be out of compliance, is again, education and technical assistance, and trying to inform. The third visit would constitute a written warning to say that they continue to be out of compliance, and any further action out of compliance may result in some law enforcement action. That, of course, would not be an action that our EH team would take. That would be forwarded to the appropriate jurisdiction for that kind of action. And I have Ron Balsamo here. He's the Environmental Health Manager, and he is overseeing that business inspection piece, and I wanted him to be available in case you had any questions about the process, where we're at, number of complaints, or any of those details that he could speak to much more eloquently than I can. Are there any questions?
I have a question, Madam--
Supervisor Johnson?
Has it gone to the second step, or the third step, and have we had to have law enforcement respond yet?
Supervisor Johnson, I'll have Ron respond, okay?
Sure.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Thus far, we have had roughly 20 complaints from the public, and five of those complaints, we have returned to the establishment for a second visit due to continuing complaints, but we have not had to move on to step three or four.
Good, okay, any other questions for Ron?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
I thought my understanding was that we would issue the, or we'd go there and explain what the rules were, then we'd go back the next day and make sure that they were complying with the rules. Are you saying that we're waiting for another complaint?
That is what we've been doing so far, yes. We can certainly alter that process if that's what the Board wants us to do.
Well, I just think it's not fair for the businesses that are following the Governor's orders and have their plans in place, if you go to somebody's business and say, hey, this is what you're supposed to be doing, when they've known all along what they're supposed to be doing, and then you wait for another complaint, which might not come in for another week or so, you know. That's just my thought on it, Madam Chair, that's all.
Okay, thank you, anyone else? Thank you, Ron.
Okay. I'd like to give you an update on our investigators and case investigations. Exactly one month ago, we had a completion proportion of 39% of cases completed, with 61% of the cases pending investigation. Now, thanks to all the hard work of those investigators, and again, appreciating the support that you've provided us to hire those investigators, we have reached a 77.4% completed rate for investigations, and we will continue to close that gap moving forward. The other 23% have all been started, are in process, including the new ones that we received today, may actually be contacted today, or at least an attempt to contact can be made on the same day in some, in many of those cases. Three case investigator, oh, so I just wanted to make sure that I continue that thought. We continue to monitor the workload of all the temp staff, and they are responsible now for the investigations, the contact tracing work, and contact monitoring of all of those cases that they are assigned, so they follow it all the way through. Three of the case investigators have been assigned as liaisons to schools and districts. Their primary role will always be investigations, so that always takes precedence over all of the work. However, as our case numbers go down, and there are fewer investigations, they're able to fill in in some of these other areas, and assist with those different roles. As we continue to see our case numbers go down and progress through these cases and these investigations, we'd like to continue reassigning those, some of those staff at least, and again, with appropriate workload, where possible, to fill in roles that our current staff have been filling, so that they can actually return to their normal jobs. Many of these people have been doing this sort of, and it's worked out because schools have been closed and so on, so they've had some time to do this. But as we sort of return back to semi-normal with schools reopening and starting back up, it's a place that we can sort of fit them back into a role, and they can continue on with their regular responsibilities.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you. You're talking about catching up, but was it last night? We had 19 cases in Bullhead, and we don't know anything about them.
Right, right, and that, Supervisor Johnson, goes back to that process that we're using, where those investigators are filling in information in a CallTrek system, and that information isn't uploaded until possibly the next day into that, into the med sys system. So we're, in terms of the information you're looking at as far as under investigation, that's why it's not available at that time for that particular report.
Well, I thought the County Manager said that we were going to concentrate on taking care of the immediate cases, and then try to catch up on the old ones as best we could. But we're not getting any kind of information on these cases at all. I understand you have to, you have to do data entry, but data entry people are quick people.
They are, Supervisor Johnson, and we are following up with all of those cases, as I mentioned, even on the same day. But the way that that information is being reported is a little different, and it takes that information in a different tract that doesn't make it available to those that are reporting out on that given day.
I don't quite understand that, but I wish it was given it to us so we could see if we're having a problem, because, you know, we had different cases in different places, and we've been dropping pretty good, and then we have a, you know, it wasn't a big jump, but quite a few people in the Bullhead area, it'd been nice to know if they were family, or came from casinos or somewhere. That's all, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson, we'll continue to work on that, okay? It's not off the radar by any stretch, so we'll continue to look for solutions to that. Okay, as you're probably aware, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention has modified their testing guidelines, so I wanted to highlight that today. Previously, the CDC said viral testing was appropriate for people with recent or suspected exposure, even if they were asymptomatic. The change is that now, even if you've been in close contact within six feet of a person with COVID-19 infection for at least 15 minutes, but do not have symptoms, you do not necessarily need a test unless you are a vulnerable individual, or your healthcare provider, or state or local public health official recommends that you take one. I do want to emphasize that through ADHS, we're continuing to work towards assuring that there is adequate testing in every community, and that is going to be our emphasis really for the long term. We, as you know, have had limited testing supplies and resources and availability in our county, and as a result, that has caused not just our percent positivity, but I think people to pause a little bit on whether or not they would be tested, and the availability of that to those that are maybe asymptomatic or close contacts. So in this case, we're going to continue to try to provide that testing opportunity for the public, so that it's always available to them, and they're not limited by being symptomatic or not. And they're not limited by being, you know, that it becomes community-based testing is, I guess, where I'm going. So, anyway, so that's going to be an emphasis on our part moving forward. And to that end, I have some information updates for the HHS testing events that are going to occur September 11th through the 14th in all three communities. So what we have right now is, Bullhead City will be Thursday, September 11th, and Saturday, September 12th, from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at the Bullhead City Police Department parking lot. Lake Havasu City will be Sunday, September 13th, and Monday, September 14th, from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at the Aquatic Center parking lot. And Kingman will be Friday, September 11th, and Saturday, September 12th, from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at our Mojave County Fairgrounds. HHS, to be clear, has not created the registration link yet, and that is where people will need to go to register for this particular, for any of those three events. So when that is released to us, we will be sure to meet with Roger, get that information to him for more outreach efforts on our part. We continue to get questions, of course, because the information's out there, but without that registration link, we really can't refer people to the testing site yet. So as soon as that's available, we'll make sure that we forward that on. An update on North Country testing from last Saturday. We had, I learned, some additional information. They have 54 people registered, 40 tests performed, two positive, 37 negative, one is still pending. Of those, let me get my information out. Of the individuals that were tested, 20 were symptomatic, 19 were asymptomatic, and one was a known positive. So that's information that we received from North Country regarding our, that particular testing event. The registration, as I understand it, is closed for the Bullhead City testing that will occur tomorrow, and that will also be at the Bullhead City parking lot, Police Department parking lot.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Angus, go ahead.
I believe in Bullhead City, because we have 150 tests, but about 100 people have signed up for it. And I'm not really even sure that the registration is closed. I'll have to, because, you know, obviously, the interest in getting these tests done has definitely waned, as shown by, and how many tests in September? How many tests are going to be in each community?
The, through the HHS testing, we will have 1,000 tests for each community.
Wow.
So that'll be 500 per event. So for Bullhead City, as I've mentioned, those are on two different days, so there can be 500 for each day.
We only had 50 people register, and 40 people show up for the Havasu one. Is it going to be more of a promotion?
Yes, yes, more of a promotion on our part, certainly. Also, to be clear, the type of testing will be different. This will be a self-administered nasal swab, and so it's not the nasal pharyngeal test that is typically done for the PCR testing. So for people who may be a little squeamish over that NP testing, this may be more tolerable for them.
So it's the same, though, test, when you say, you put it up your nose yourself?
Correct, however, with an MP, that's actually really going much further up into the nasal cavity. A nasal swab, otherwise, is not quite as invasive.
It's not as invasive, but is it as accurate?
It's not the gold standard, but it's, it's accurate, yes.
That's the one I did. He had me do it myself, so it was accurate for me, but I wonder how far people, people want. And again, so CDC says now, again, changing the goalposts, that you should only test symptomatic, which is what we said right from the beginning, right? Which is what we were trying to get people to understand. Then all the blitz testing came, we didn't get the tests, and now they're measuring. So how is the state, what is the state saying? Are they going, are they going against now with the CDC? I mean, because they're still providing these tests, so how do they explain that?
Well, I think their explanation is they want to make sure that there is adequate testing in every community, that people aren't excluded from testing because a testing site is only testing symptomatic individuals. And so they want to have that as an opportunity for everybody, rather than it being limited to. And that's, that's been my understanding of ADHS at this point.
Why do you think people are not testing? I mean, what are your people hearing on the ground? Do you think people are just tired of it, or they, they don't trust the results? They don't want to get into it? What do you think it is?
You know, that's a really good question, Supervisor Angus, and I don't know that I have a real complete answer for you. I think there's so many different reasons for it, some that you've probably mentioned already, and probably others as well. I mean, an NP swab is not a comfortable experience. So if that's, if that's the testing, I think people might be, they might only go if they are symptomatic.
Right, but the reality of it is now for us, for our numbers to get into that area where we can open up completely, we do need to do more tests. And I just, in public, I want to relay that, that if you even think you want to get a test, please do during these next couple of periods. I know, I think that you can come from anywhere, if you want to come this weekend and do the Bullhead City. And like I said, I think if you, because we had 150 tests, I think there's still reservation spots available. Where can people go to register for that? Do you know?
For, I'm sorry.
To register for the Bullhead test this weekend? Because that's the one that's the most, you know, coming up.
Correct, correct. I believe that's a phone call to North Country Healthcare, and we have that information on our Facebook page, and I believe that our Communications Director has also posted that.
Okay, I'll get that, and I'll put it on my page to the Bullhead people. But again, anybody, if you're feeling, you know, that you want it for whatever reason, you don't need a reason, right?
Exactly, exactly, great. What I wanted you also to be aware of is that they'll be testing in the prison starting tomorrow and running through the weekend. So there will be 3,300 inmates tested over the weekend. And this is a private prison, and so those cases are reported back to our county if there are positive cases. And knowing that, and knowing that that can go either way, right, in terms of percent positivity? We, if we run a lot of tests and we get a low number of positives, we can certainly see how that could benefit our percent positivity rate. However, if we get a lot of positives out of this, those do belong to our county. I have contacted ADHS, and actually, many health directors have contacted ADHS to express our concern that these numbers would be added into our county data and affect our numbers. So they are aware, and they are considering options to try to extract that information out.
Good.
I don't have an answer for you yet of what that looks like, but I'll continue to keep you updated on that.
Terrific.
Also important to note is that--
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
I think we're asking two different questions on the private prison. We use the private prison when we're counting people for census and other things, and now we don't want to count them, not that I want to count them, but I don't want to be somebody that just says, oh, give me money for them, but when it comes to a problem, then we say, oh, we don't want anything to do with them. That was all.
Okay, Denise, has there been any conversation about these numbers being reported separately from Mojave County?
There are conversations occurring, and those, what they're doing is considering the options to remove those prison numbers out of county data. As you can imagine, Pinell County is also very concerned about their, their numbers increasing. So, and there are many other counties, of course, with prisons, private and public, so. And Supervisor Johnson, I definitely understand your, your statement, and I think it's, it's a controlled environment, and so where, where we have sort of a lack of control within that particular community of how the number of cases, I think that's our real concern, so.
County Manager Alters?
May I?
Yes, please do.
Given the uncertainty of the answer that we just heard from Denise, and indeed, there has been dialogue in the last 48 hours since Tuesday, under the guidance and leadership of the Board, we have all worked and done our best to reduce the numbers and the positivity. If indeed the numbers at the prison would reflect a higher positivity than, than we are sitting at, at the county at this time, that would impact us in, in quite a negative way, and it would impact our ability. It may change us from being in the moderate zone back to the extreme or severe zone. And to that end, I give an example of our county jail that has done really well. It's under county guidance and control, and our, our staff have done an exemplary job in sampling, testing, and isolating. We have, we do not have similar control over at the prison. And so to that end, and until we get a, an answer that we are satisfied with, and does not hurt the county's standing, I would, I would strongly urge the Board today to perhaps discuss and maybe even approve a motion that would enable you as the Chair, or myself on the Board's behalf, to follow through with ADHS, Governor's Office if necessary, or the Legislature to ensure that the, however they handle it, it just does not, if the numbers are high, they don't get pinned on Mojave County numbers. That will set us back. So that would be my recommendation to you, if you would so consider.
Okay, thank you very much, and I think that's a conversation that needs to be had, and I believe we do need to designate a speaker for that. And I would certainly recommend that you take that on as the County Manager. So is there any discussion on that?
Madam Chair? I'd like some clarity. Have, has the prison tested before?
I don't believe to this extent, no. There has been ongoing testing at the prison of certain inmates.
And has that been counted in our numbers?
It has, correct.
And how about the tribes? Are they still counted in our?
They are, correct.
Okay.
Yes. And one other key point to make here is that we, as I mentioned, have moved into the moderate range for percent positivity for the first week, based on the week of the ninth. And that's what was reported this morning. We need one more week in that category, and below 10% to meet that moderate category, two weeks in a row, two consecutive weeks to get there, and be in that moderate range, and allow businesses to reopen under that attestation process without having to go through an appeal. So the same also, conversely, is if, if in the future, we had, we moved into the moderate range, and then we had a week where we moved into the substantial in one of those categories, that would not count against us necessarily that week. We would have to have two weeks in that substantial category, again, for us to need to move into that other category. So just to be clear there, it requires that two-week timeframe.
Denise, the numbers reported from the prison, is that part of the overall Golden Valley numbers that we say reported?
I need to check that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm, certainly.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Angus?
You brought up the percent positivity as for opening and attestation. I think we have some information, new information, that was just given to us this morning about that process, and I believe our State Representative Leo Biassucci is here to talk to us about that.
Supervisor Angus, I'll recognize him in just a moment.
Okay, I just wanted to say that.
Are there any other questions for me while I'm here?
Any questions for Denise?
Madam Chairman Gould here.
Supervisor Gould, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Denise, you mentioned in your report that one of the people tested was a known positive. I'm curious why known positives are being tested in blitz testing.
Supervisor Gould, I don't have an answer for you. I just got that information this morning, and it didn't have a lot of explanation with it. So it was just a, a chart, so I can follow up on that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mm-hmm, certainly.
Supervisor--
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Gold, or Johnson?
Thank you, ma'am. A few months back, we discussed doing deduplication and periodically correcting the numbers at the end of the month. And I see we're back to doing it every day now, as the running totals do not add up. For example, on Tuesday, we had 11 new cases, but if you take Monday's total and subtract it from Tuesday's, you only get six, not 11. Is there a reason why we're doing this now and not at the end of the month? And if so, we probably should have an explanation, I guess, every day on there, because we're getting questions on the numbers not matching.
Certainly, Supervisor Johnson, I can understand that. And the fact sheet was designed to replace that report that you were receiving under a confidential and privileged note, because that was all the accurate information. Those were accurate case counts, et cetera. And so we were using that to make sure that we were reporting out that accurate data and not working off of a rolling total. So that would include the deduplication and so on. So I do agree that there needs to be some language-- so on. So I do agree that there needs to be some language in the press release or otherwise to help people understand why those numbers don't necessarily add up from day to day based on the press release.
All right, thank you. That's all, Madam Chair.
Okay, Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are we going to be required to put a motion together on the prison numbers?
We need a motion to designate someone to be the speaker, to contact the state, the Governor's Office, and ADHS. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Yes.
So would it be helpful to have a motion then to determine that person as?
Yes, we need that motion.
All right, I'll make a motion then to designate the chairman of the board as the communications person to the Governor's Office concerning the matter in which the numbers from the prison are counted, and so they don't count against the numbers of Mojave County. And so stated by our county manager, Sam Elters, "We're doing a fantastic job at the Mojave County Jail. Why should we be penalized by an operation that we have no control over?" So I think with that, that motion will be very effective.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for that vote of confidence. Okay, is there anything else? Denise, do you have anything else for us?
I do not.
No. Okay, any further questions or comments?
Chairman, I have just one item, if I could.
Yes, County Attorney Espeland, go ahead.
Thank you. And I want to do that before the representative has an opportunity to speak, just in general, about the COVID stuff and reporting and things like that. You know, I've been here for many months, five, six months, going on six months now, and just the observations of the different motions and things that the board has passed and things. And just, I think this is a reminder for all the members of the board, as well as department heads, you know, the position that Mojave County takes on these COVID-related items, just make sure that you understand it's by the vote of the board. So the board is taking that, and that is the position of the county. And just, I recommend to the board members and to the department heads and things that when going out and speaking in public and things, just remember, you know, Mojave County's position is what is stated by the board, and that it is the board that takes that position and things, you know, and try to avoid taking, my recommendation is try to avoid taking positions where you're saying, "Well, this is what Mojave County says or does," when in fact, the board has not voted that way, or they've not voted on that issue. Just keep that in mind. And also, too, you can, though, explain, you know, "These are the positions the board has taken." And also, you know, you can say things like, you know, "I took this position on this, but also I took this position, this was the minority vote," or whatnot. Just make sure to stay in that factual thing, just so we don't get things confused and stuff with the public. Also, in that same line, keep in mind, too, that, you know, the board represents all of Mojave County, but you also represent your own individual districts. Obviously, you'd be speaking on your own individual districts, and you'll have your opportunity to speak that to people. But just be aware of that when you're speaking in public and things like that. So that's all I just wanted to say.
Okay, thank you for that reminder.
Sure.
I don't understand that at all.
What do you mean?
I just don't understand. So you're saying that we can't say something in public that might run counter to what the board has voted on?
No, I'm never going to tell you what you can or cannot say. My recommendation is that, you see here the positions are. So you can say, in public, say, "Hey, the board voted this way. This is my position on this." So absolutely, you can do that. But just, you've got to recognize that, you know, this is what the board has taken on this position. So that wouldn't be a problem there, as long as you say, "Hey, this is what the position that the board has taken." Does that answer your question?
Well, I think it's just odd that you think we have to be reminded of it, but that's okay.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I have to say it again, because my microphone, I just thought it was odd that you think that we need to be reminded of something that we've been doing for the last, you know, since I've been on the board. So I just thought it was odd. I thought, you know, is there something extra about COVID that we should know about?
Well, I bring this up in the context of COVID, and I appreciate that you bring that up, too. There's just so much information coming out and so many things. I'm just trying to remind the board that in this COVID situation, when we're trying to convey what is going on to the public, you know, here's one thing just to remember, so that we can get rid of some of the confusion and really understand what's going on. Just something to help the board members. Especially, and I'm talking about in the context of the COVID. Thank you.
So I think there has been some confusion to the general public, because this is a split vote when it comes to the many issues related to the COVID-19. And it's not only a split board in Mojave County, but it's split in the state of Arizona and also in the nation. So I think the attorney was just reminding us that the board's position, based on a majority vote, is the board's position. But individual supervisors may not agree with that, but it is what it is when the board approves a motion. So thank you for that reminder. And we have in our audience today our state representative, Leo Biassucci, and he brings greetings from the state Capitol. And I understand, from an earlier conversation, some very interesting and exciting news. So Leo Biassucci, thank you for coming, and the floor is yours.
Perfect. Thank you, Supervisor Bishop. Thank you to the board for allowing me to speak today. I'm Representative Leo Biassucci for District 5, and I just wanted to come today to kind of give an update from our level, myself, Senator Borelli, Representative Cobb, us three who represent District 5, really have been working from day one behind the scenes. You know, as you know, at the legislature, we had to try to get out of there as quickly as we could back in March, and we were able to pass a lot of measures that helped with the funding, to help with COVID. And we knew we had to do that, because we understood the seriousness of what we're about to be faced with, and we were successful in that. The downside was, the moment we ended session, we lost all power at the legislature. So really, from that moment on, we've been working behind the scenes and, you know, helping constituents with unemployment claims, and testing sites, and test kits. And, you know, it seems like 10 years ago, that, you know, I spoke with Denise about getting test kits, because, you know, a lot of times, it's how it works out here in Mojave County. When you're rural, you're left behind. And that's really what we saw in the beginning, was all the test kits were going to the metro areas, and it was endless nights on the phone. And, you know, finally, we started to get test kits out here, and now it's fantastic to see how easy it is to get tested. And it's so important, like we discussed, making those tests available for everybody. And really, with the new recommendation from CDC, which was a concern to Sunny, Gina, and I, where we said, you know, when they came out and said, "You should only get tested if you feel sick," we had a concern with that, because we said, "Look, if that happens," because right now, it was anybody gets tested regardless. And in reality, that actually kept the numbers down. When you say you can only get tested if you feel sick, now only the sick are going to get tested. So you have 20 people get tested who feel sick, seven or 10 are positive, our numbers are going to skyrocket. So we did bring that up to Dr. Christ and the Health Department, and said, "Look, we just ask you, you need to look to recalculate those numbers, figure out a new equation, because otherwise, we're never going to get out of this." And so luckily, fortunately, they understood that, and they said they are looking into that. And that just shows, you know, the relationship we have with the Health Department, with Denise, with Dr. Christ. We're constantly on the phone with them. And I want to thank all of you as supervisors, you know, even though we don't always see eye to eye, even though we don't always agree on our method or what we want to do, what we believe should be done, we always have respect for each other. And that's something that's super important. Sunny, Gina, and I have always advocated for that since day one, is how we have an open channel of communication. And that is vital, because even if you don't agree on the method you choose, it's important that we respect each other, because bottom line in the end, we're all trying to do what we feel is best for our constituents. And I think that's what shows today. You know, you look at the numbers, we're dropping, we've been dropping for a long time, which we wanted. We wanted that. And whether you're on one side of the fence or the other, I think us being in the middle kind of put us in the position where today, where we're about to open up our businesses. And that is the information I wanted to share, was that, like Denise mentioned earlier, for a week now, we've been under the moderate. We're confident that we're going to be in the moderate for another week. And if that's the case, then next Thursday, we will be allowed to open up. Our businesses will be allowed to submit the application, or not the application, but the form online. And I'm not sure if Denise, did you mention where they go to get that form or to fill it up?
If you wouldn't mind, that would be great.
Yeah, it's on the website. If you go to the azdhs.com, is it .com or .gov?
.gov.
.gov, excuse me. Website, it's actually on there. And maybe you guys can make that link available on the Mojave County website. But the beautiful thing about this is, we're assuming we reached that second week, which we are confident we will, businesses do not have to apply anymore and wait for a response. This is a matter of you are signing or filling out this form, saying, "We're going to follow the guidelines, we're going to follow the recommendations," and you can open up immediately. Now, there are guidelines that are online that each business will see according to what they're opening, whether it's a gym or a bar. Right now, it's at 50% occupancy. But bottom line, we just want to say how excited we are. Sunny, Gina, and I have just, we've been fighting for this, because, you know, at one end, you want to make sure that our constituents are safe, right? I mean, this is, there's no doubt this is real, that COVID is a real thing, and we've lost lives, which you never want to see happen. On the other end, you see businesses closing, mom and pops, right? Our bloodline of this country, of this county, of the state, are the mom and pops. And it's devastating to see these emails of people saying, "My lifelong business is done. I can't open anymore." You hate to see the suicides rates rise, the drug use rise. These are all things that we also have to consider. And so for us, it's truly a moment where we are excited to see that we have done what we were told to do as a county, as constituents. We followed the orders, we continue to follow the recommendations. And because of that, it's exciting to say that we're moving forward, and we're going in the direction we need to go to. And hopefully, next Thursday, we can, we'll be at the same level, and our businesses will be able to open, and we can move forward and try and get back to normal. So I just wanted to share that with all of you, with our constituents. And I want to thank everybody. Like I said, you guys, our constituents, everybody involved, this is something we've never experienced in our lifetime. We're new to this. A lot of things we don't understand, there's a lot of trial and error. And so I hope that people understand, you know, it's not about fighting or saying, "You're wrong and you're right." I mean, this is uncharted waters. But it's truly exciting to see that, you know what, we got out of it, we're going to get out of it, we're going to get back to normal. And it's truly exciting to be your representative in the moment when we're going to come out of it.
Okay, thank you very much, Leo. And I certainly appreciate you coming to speak to us this morning, and to all of our constituents that are watching online. It's good to see you and Sunny and Regina working as a team, a Mojave County team, to take our message forward. And I appreciate our communications back and forth. I know you're not a board, but you certainly work together, and it's a pleasure watching the progress that you've been making. And I look forward to going forward for the next four or five years.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Me, too.
Any other comments or questions for Representative Leo?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Angus?
For the businesses that have submitted applications, as they were instructed to do last week, I know there are a couple of heard, have been denied, but if they haven't, if they have been denied, can they today put another one forward? And will the moderate level, will that be considered? So like, best-case scenario, they could resubmit the application, maybe they'll hear within the next week that they could open. Worst-case is that they wait a week and definitely open if we're still in the moderate. And that's still an if.
Right.
You know, things could spike. But we're fairly confident, is that what you're saying, that we're going to be in the moderate? We've been in the moderate, because remember, we're two weeks behind. And I just want to reiterate that the form that you send in is not an application. It's not like you send it, then you've got to wait another week, or wait for them to see it and, you know, allow you to open. Once you send it, you can open. So hopefully, by next Thursday, you believe that all the businesses that have been shuttered by that executive order will be able to open.
Yeah, so Supervisor Angus, correct. So if you were denied an application, let's say right now, my recommendation and our recommendation, you know, from Gina, Sunny and I, is that reapply. Because best-case scenario, you reapply, you fix whatever needed to be fixed, and you get approved before next Thursday. Because you're right, I mean, I am confident, Sunny and Gina, and we're all confident that we're going to be okay next Thursday to stay open. But just in case we're not, I would not tell these companies or businesses, "Don't reapply," in hopes that we are going to be open next Thursday. I would say, "Reapply." Worst-case scenario, you know, you get denied again, or whatnot, and you can open next Thursday. But yeah, you're absolutely right. You know, we're hopeful, we're confident that's going to be the case. And hopefully, those businesses that were denied, they can reapply, get involved. And if not, then next Thursday, it's not an application, it's just a form saying, "Hey, we're going to follow the recommendations." It's pretty much a statement, saying, "We're going to follow what you're recommending to us." And you turn it in. So it's not a waiting period, it's just a matter of, all right, you're letting us know, or letting the state know, that you're going to follow what you need to follow, and then you can open. And like I said, though, on the website, there are the, there's still guidelines you need to follow, 50% occupancy and some other things. But like Denise said, this isn't a, you know, you're open next Thursday, you miss one thing, and you're shut down right away. I mean, they're giving you opportunities. Like I said, we're all learning here. We're all trying to figure out and navigate through this, and figure out, you know, what we need to do. It's not easy, what we're asking for these businesses to do. So I am personally, I agree with the fact that, look, we need to give them the opportunity to fix what they're missing, and give them multiple chances to do that. If they're being obviously, you know, purposely doing things, then there's no reason they need to be open. But I think giving them chances is the right thing to do.
Representative, have you heard anything more about the money that was put aside for rent assistance for these particular group of businesses? Because I've heard from business owners that they haven't heard back. And we know, right after our meeting, that they were told, you know, "Put in right away, we'll follow it," and they still haven't heard. That's going, that's two weeks now. Is there any way we can follow up on that?
I will follow up on that for you. You know, unfortunately, I do not have an answer to that. It's, like I said, it's been difficult when the legislature is not in session, and we don't have control over anything, really. I mean, we have the same power as a constituent right now. And so, but I will get, I will ask the questions, that's the one benefit. I have the emails and phone numbers to people that have that answer, and we can figure out what we need to do to make sure people are getting that money, because it's vital. It's vital, absolutely.
Well, I know that Representative Cobb was the one who made that happen. And I just, people know, I hope that they could have gotten up to 25, they could get up to $25,000 rental assistance from the state on an emergency basis. There was another form. So if you could follow up on that and see where we're at on that, that would be great.
Absolutely.
And thank you for all your hard work. It's been an interesting couple of months, but it's, I think we're winding down. And I hope that the businesses out there use this week to sort of ramp up and know that they're going to be open for business next week, hopefully.
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 Absolutely.
Okay. So Representative Biassucci, you heard the conversation that Denise Burley mentioned about the mass testing at our prison, with 3,300 inmates testing. So this could go up or down as far as Mojave County staying in the moderate range. What are your thoughts on that? I mean, if we get the businesses all excited about reopening Thursday, and then we get the results of this testing from the prison, we don't know what that's going to be. And hopefully, I'll be reaching out to the state and trying to get those numbers reported separately from Mojave County, and certainly appreciate any help from you that I can get on doing that. But do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, Supervisor Bishop, Chairman, I agree with you. I mean, I think you have an isolated area in the prison. They can take the measures to make sure people are tested and it stays isolated. So for that to be included in the general public, I think, is not the right thing to do. I think you need to separate that. And that is something I will express with you when they figure out the numbers, to say, "Look, that needs to be something that's taken out of the equation," because I don't think it's fair if they're included and that brings the numbers back up. Kind of like with the CDC's new recommendations for testing only if you feel sick. You have to reconsider the calculations for the percentages, because it's going to skyrocket, and we're going to be out, we're going to be substantial again in a week if we only go by those measures. So I agree with you 100%, and I'll absolutely... So I agree with you 100% and I'll absolutely express that to them as well when we speak to, to Dr. Christ.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sure you'll pass that on to-
Absolutely.
Senator Borelli and Representative Cobb.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
No questions.
Madam Chairman, Gould here.
Supervisor Gould, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Representative Biassucci, I'm somewhat concerned that unregulated businesses have to fill out a form to return to operate and submit to the will of the state on something that has not went through the legislature. Do you have any concerns with that?
Supervisor Gould, I do. I mean, I've been, you know, very vocal about, about businesses being shut down. And I just didn't agree with that from the beginning. I just felt that businesses have, you know, it's wise for them to take the measures to make sure their business is safe and healthy. And it should be up to them to take those measures because it should be the consumer's job or the, up to the consumer to decide if that business stays open. If they don't feel safe in that business, they're not going to go there. So it would be wise for the business to do what they need to do to make sure the consumer is safe. So I, I agree and understand where you come from to say,